We'd like to see that. The next item is the enclave. I'm actually within 500 feet and I need to recuse myself and plan to address the commission as a neighbor. And I think Patty, you are gonna handle this item.
Thanks, Tim. Diana?
This must be my turn.
It's your turn.
Good evening, commissioners. I want to go through, well, let's see, let's give a little history. NPH Architects has proposed a project called the Enclave. And there was a hearing in February and the commission asked them to go talk to the neighbors and they have done that and now they're back. So I want to, since we have a couple of new commissioners since that, I want to quickly run through the plans and then say a couple other things.
She's totally right.
This project is located between 65th Street and Ocean Avenue, between the Baker Building and the parking lot for Key Curriculum Press near Vallejo Street. The height limit where this project is is 30 feet and the height limit on the north side of 66th Street is 40 feet by right, 55 feet with the use permit. The elevation on 65th Street has a grand entrance, a two-story volume over, a garage entry with a 12-foot driveway that would have a beeper to warn people if another car is coming out. And then two two-story units along 65th Street next to the Baker Building. Facing Peabody Lane, which is a private way privately held, and the residential neighborhood to the south, the project would have a small planting strip and then a 10-foot-high retaining wall and some landscape patio areas for the first set of units. These units would be set back 10 feet from Peabody Lane and they're two stories tall. And then set back 20 feet from them, 30 feet from Peabody Lane, which is a correction to the staff report, would be some other units which don't go all the way east. There's just two of those. And then facing the Key Curriculum Press and Vallejo's parking lot and Vallejo Street, there would be a blank wall that's from two to two-and-a-half stories tall and a courtyard with trees visible above the 10-foot fence. And then another blank wall with a unit above it in corrugated metal. And then some four-story volumes to the west next to the Baker Building. The heights and this elevation, if you see slight discrepancies between what I'm saying and what the applicant has with some of their drawings, they're using roofs and I'm using parapets. So you have both ones. Both numbers. On 65th Street, the east volume is 33 feet high. The middle one is 41 feet and the one to the west is 45 feet. To the south, the first units are 26 foot eight and the units that are stepped back are 47 foot eight in height. The project plan, this plan view shows where there would be two stories and three stories and four stories. The two-story areas near the south and east where the residential neighborhood is would be within the height limit. And the three and four-story volumes to the north and west would require a height variance. First floor of landscape plan shows the interior courtyard and the patios and the street trees and some landscaping on the sidewalk. The garage has, this is the most exciting picture in here, has 29 spaces plus some bicycle parking. And the, sorry. The first floor has hallway going in wrapping around the courtyard and another hallway for exits with units wrapping around the courtyard. And the second floor has the bedrooms for the first floor units mostly. And the third floor has another set of units which are just on the north and west down to about 30 feet from Peabody Lane on the west. And then the fourth story has the upstairs parts of those units. And this drawing shows someone standing in the residential yard south of the project looking past a little building that's in their yard. And they can't really see the first units, they can sort of see the other units. So it shows that it's not supposed to have a big impact on that yard visibility from there. The applicant held a meeting with the neighbors after the February meeting and the neighbors expressed concern that a height variance would be perceived as setting a precedent, even though the zoning ordinance says it's not supposed to, but they thought that would happen. And that that would, that it would block views of the Baker Building and that it would incur, if the developer of the Baker Building used the same parameters, they would get more volume by destroying the building. So the applicant's prepared a drawing saying, no, that's not true. That with, this is the Baker Building with some four-story and three-story volumes. They say that would give more volume than it would be existing building than if they use similar parameters to what the applicant is asking for on the adjacent site. Of course, with the 30-foot height limit, they would not get much volume at all. Mr. Martin has a little bit of disagreement with that. It depends how you look at the clearer stories, how you know they are, things like that. Let's see, what else? Because the applicant has not yet done a phase-two site assessment, which we cannot always require people to do, it's not absolutely certain that the site could be developed for residential use. So we just want people to be aware of that.
Diana? Could you actually move closer to the microphone, move the microphone closer to you.
So, okay. How's that? Okay. There are two additions to the conditions of approval that we recommend. One is that the applicant wants to get a chance to try to convince the city and the regulatory agencies that a phase-two is not needed. So we said, okay, we'll just say if we require it, then you'll have to do it. And the other one is something that Public Works found out recently. The sewer, the sanitary sewer line under 65th Street is getting close to capacity. So they're gonna have to do a study of what's needed to do to bring it up to capacity for the anticipated development. And anyone that develops along 65th Street from now in the near future is going to need to pay a proportionate fair share cost of that study and the improvements that follow from it. So that's what that other condition says. We have two letters about the project. Mr. Martin, I'm sure will want to present his. The other is from Gail Bailey, who owns property nearby but is having to work and live in LA for a little while. She said, she presented a letter before and is sort of reiterating her points. She's unhappy with the project mostly because it hasn't changed. She says it's too dense, that she doesn't believe there is enough hardship to justify a variance, that it won't benefit the neighborhood, and that there could be staging and parking problems similar to what was experienced with Oliver Lofts. Regarding that last point, there is a new condition of approval requiring a staging and parking plan to be approved by the city before issuance of building permit. So that one's taken care of. She would like the project to have a reduced number of units to stay within the height limit and to provide realistic staging. So that's my report and I'll be happy to answer any questions. And we have the applicant here and I'm sure we have some neighbors who want to speak to.
Question I have. Why would we not require a phase-two if somebody's building residential? I mean, isn't that a routine thing?
It's a matter of when it's done. The projects I've worked on, we have not required a phase-two prior to the planning commission hearing. Maybe, I don't know, maybe they weren't typical. But we have a condition that it's done before issuance of building permit in this project and the other projects I've worked on.
Well, I'm finding it a little puzzling that we're supposed to approve a project that might never get built because he can't get it cleared. You know, it's sort of like putting...
The cart before the horse.
Thank you. You know, I'm always saying that wrong. Thank you for helping me with that. And I, I mean, in this city, we have toxics everywhere. It's a given that they have to do that. And I'm just really, you know, thinking that the fact that the applicant doesn't even seem to want to do one really disturbs me.
It's certainly within your purview to require that in the conditions of approval if you think it's appropriate.
Diana, another concern, Joe?
Yeah, I have to very hardly second Chris's idea. We have gone over, bent over backwards to try to protect the citizens because we know, and I think, you know, we don't have a choice here for safety. It's obvious it's needed.
In addition to that, with the concerns, not knowing the extent of any contamination, if there is any, it could significantly affect the design. And it seems warranted to get a sense of what's out there and what the constraints are before the project moves forward for entitlements.
Any other questions?
I think at this point, I'd like to hear from the citizens before I make further comments.
I think the applicant might wish to speak to.
Or the applicant first, certainly.
Do you have a presentation?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have some words that we'd like to put up for your review? Where would you like us to put them?
Oh, gosh, maybe...
This way so you can see them. This way.
Are the easel scaly trucks?
Perhaps they could be set up so the commission can see them as, as well as the camera when we do that.
Yeah, we usually just put it right there. See if there's one in here. There's usually one in the corner, but I don't see it.
All of them.
Thank you for your patience. While we get these set up.
We need to be able, we need to be picked up by the camera.
Where are you standing?
Over there.
Which is right here. So if you set it right here.
Just set it right here.
Right here?
Yeah.
All right. Carl, we're gonna use the easel here so we'll set up the previous building first, the previous plan first, and then we'll go into the redesign.
What are some intangible stuff that you had against it to develop?
Variants.
Outside of variants.
But the fact that I can't stand the developers irrelevant, you know? Why do we want to give back to them? You know, that's the whole point. Why, there's no logic there.
See, but the developer, the client developer, to me, is important because you determine what do we do, do they get the entitlements right? And you have shitty...
See, what you have here is you have a block, you have this big trap, and you have the Baker Building, then you have this little lot, then you have a parking lot, and then you have residential all around.
Right.
This, to go forward without the whole lots being considered in conjunction with it, you know, doing joint, in my opinion. And, you know, I mean, they don't have any money on this, on that site. They paid $200,000 for that, if that's anything. In 2000, in 2000, when they bought it from Oliver Lofts, $200,000 bucks.
Boy, that's nothing.
Right. What else did I do? I did a little work. I found out that the average square foot cost to build is like $300 a square foot, okay? And if you average this out at 1,100, you know, for some of them that's smaller, some that are larger, then that's gonna cost them $330,000 per unit to build them. He's gonna sell for like $500,000. So the cost of this to build, he's gonna make a 34% profit that's unheard of in the development industry. 15% profit is great. So why do we want to give them that? What's the hardship?
Assuming that they don't have to put a lot of money into mediation.
I understand that. I understand that, yeah. But they aren't even willing to do that.
Well, I mean, that's, that's step one, right? Here's the second, the second survey, right? I mean, it's not even organized.
And this thing is, see, they have the Oliver Lofts, they...
All right, I think we're about there. Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, elected officials, staff, interested members of the Emeryville community, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to address you this evening on behalf of the Enclave Development. My name is Adam Lubo. My company is Pradium Incorporated. I provide sales, marketing, and advisory services for builders and developers throughout California. I've been associated with Nick Harilan Beedies and PH Architects. I provided the sales and marketing management for the Oliver Lofts development and Nick has asked me to help with this particular development as well. I think that, I appreciate Diana's perspective and brief history. I'd like to provide a little bit of additional history as to the amount of time and effort that has gone into the design of this particular development. Back in the fall of 2000, about four years ago, the developer presented an initial plan for 29 units. This was an informal meeting and issues were presented and discussed regarding the density of the property, the proposed plan at that time, issues related to privacy with surrounding neighbors. Parking at the time was planned to be on grade and at that time, the planners had no issue with the density, which was proposed to be 73 units to the acre. The direction was provided to us to go back and get feedback from the neighbors, which we did. And Carl, could you make some comments about the first plan as, as it was related? We have, is that the 29-unit plan?
Yes, it is. Actually.
Can we use a microphone, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. We had 20, 29 units ringing a central courtyard. It was much more monolithic in appearance, fairly large facade fronting on the parking lot to the east. There was some attempt to make some articulation, to have some forms that broke up the surface. So from there, we...
Do you mean 26 units or 29 units?
I'm sorry?
Did you say 29 units? I think there's 26 units on that.
Oh, okay. We started off with 29, reduced it. We took off some units towards the back here after our initial meeting.
In the, in the winter of 2001, there was a meeting that was held with the neighbors and issues related to the previous issues brought up by staff related to density and privacy were reiterated by the neighbors. So the, they went back and they did in fact redesign it to a 26-unit design. And that was presented in about May of 2001. And that, that is the 26-unit design that you see here. And here's an additional...
I'm, I'm having to refresh my memory here because I haven't looked at this for a while. This is the, the front of the 26-unit design and the rear.
Okay. All right. Do you have anything else on the 26?
Carl, I'm not sure that microphone is on. Let me go and set, let me see.
The, the meeting in May of 2001 presented the redesign with the 26 units. This was a planning commission study session. We received additional feedback at that time to further reduce the density, reduce the height, open up the front facade of the development to the 65th Street frontage, and to put the parking underground. Okay?
That's basic, that's basically this design, which I'm sure you've all seen the perspectives of it.
Do you have the cross-section, Carl? Of the previous design and the new design? I want this to be a, a show.
Oh, right.
Let's take those off before that collapses.
It'll, it'll be okay. The, the initial, or the, I guess the second iteration, which was the 26 units, you can see the mass in the front of the site. The building came up just under 50 feet.
We, we undertook a major redesign and it took about two and a half years to really bring it forward. The, the major redesign was presented to immediate neighbors in December 2003, January 2004. We met with the Oliver Lofts homeowners and the Liquid Sugar homeowners and were told by those groups that at that time that they liked the plan and would support it. And Carl, if you would, please go ahead and continue to describe the differences between the two programs.
Well, it looks pretty obvious that we've reduced the mass of the building, front and back. The one area that where we've kept the, the major part of the massing is a strip that is right along the Baker Metal Building to the south. The idea was to keep the, the two major masses together rather than create separate masses.
Go ahead, pull that one down and then show the others. Thank you.
So here we've broken down the, the scale of the facade on the 56th Street, or 65th to have smaller elements graduating down towards the parking lot. Same thing all the way through that we're stepping from the Baker, Baker Metal Building being the highest and stepping down as we progress both towards the south, towards Peabody Lane, and also towards, towards the south, or, I'm sorry, towards the parking lot.
Anything on the next board that you want to demonstrate? About the courtyard?
Thanks. I think Diana described it pretty well, but again, the lowest part of the development is at the very south end and we come and step up as we come towards the northwest corner.
In February of 2004, this newest design for only 20 units was presented in a planning commission public hearing. We believe that in this 20-unit design, that we've responded appropriately to the various concerns that have been expressed over the last several years in regards to the density by lowering the density and the number of units by 23% from the original plan. We increased the number of parking spaces and designed that the parking be below grade. We opened up the front facade of the building as planned and we lowered the average height. In this current design, 32% of the project is designed as open space. The average height is only 24.8 feet, where the maximum could be 30. We layered the height, as Carl demonstrated, by progressively massing the lowest heights from Peabody Lane and the adjacent parking lot back to the highest portions along the Baker Metal Building. The design is also layered from the north and from the east. We believe that the current design offers a variety of plans and a building that is not monolithic, which would be a lot less expensive to build as a monolithic building. It's not monochromatic. It offers varying heights, varying setbacks, different colors and materials. And further, the current design complements the surrounding neighborhood and it reflects the industrial aesthetic of Emeryville. We have some letters of support which I have distributed, which support the current design. These letters come from immediate neighbors such as the Oliver Lofts Homeowners Association and Oliver Lofts homeowner who lives directly and immediately across the street from this proposed plan and whose home faces this plan. We also have a letter of support from the Liquid Sugar Homeowners Association directly across the street. We have a letter of support from the owner of the adjacent parking lot, the Key Curriculum Parking Lot. There's a letter from a nearby property owner who is willing to allow us to store and stage materials during our construction process. Hopefully that addresses concerns that have been put forward regarding where we would store and stage materials. We have a letter of support for this current design that is signed by three residents that are immediately on the other side of Peabody Lane and across the street on Vallejo. I think it's important to note that Gail Bailey's letter, which is opposed to this development, it's important to note that Ms. Bailey's property is for sale. Ms. Bailey is a part-time resident of Emeryville and she speaks in her letter about greed. I think it's important to note that her property, if and when sold, will probably be one of the most expensive properties sold to date in the city of Emeryville, well over a million dollars. Ladies and gentlemen, I greatly appreciate your time, your courtesy, and your consideration, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are some people who are here who would like to speak in support of this plan and I would ask that you consider their time and thank you very much.
I'll have that opportunity when we open the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the commission to the applicant?
Not at this point.
Hearing then, okay.
Thank you.
With that, I will open up the public hearing. And for anyone wishing to speak on this item, please step forward, state your name, and sign in on the tablet to your right or to your left. Oh, yeah.
Jim Martin, 64th Street. I actually put together a very detailed letter and I realized I just handed it to the commission and staff and the applicant tonight. But I, I basically, what I did is I walked through the staff report, concerns I had about that, and I don't want to belabor that. I'm, I'm hoping you at least had a chance to quickly look at it. And I know staff was able to look at it earlier tonight. And I did provide a copy to the applicant. But I want to touch on what I think are the major issues and sort of the simplicity of this and also acknowledge where this project has gone over the last, how many years? It's a, it's a much improved project and I think there are aspects of the design that are certainly better than what we were looking at back in 2001. My gut feeling is I'd rather see a different product on this property, something completely different that obviously the applicant is not interested in. Something that has a density and a height that actually provides a transition from north of 65th to Peabody. That's why there's a height limit on this one block from Vallejo to the Greenway in recognition of the transition and the need to transition both in height and density to the older neighborhood to the south. Not being sure where the commission feels in that regard and the idea of a completely different product here. There are other ways that this project can still be improved and tweaked. I want to point out two things in the staff report that I think are actually incorrect. One, there's a reference to a comparative project at the end of Doyle at Ocean. It's the Collins Project there. It's a five-unit project. I think the staff report refers to a density there of 50 units per acre. I think the lot's about 5,800 square feet. I think the lot's about 5,800 square feet. It's two buildings, there's a space in between, there's a courtyard, there's a fountain, there's uncovered ground level parking. The density there is actually about 37.5 units per acre. And that might not make a difference when you look at the range, but when you live in a space like that and you think what the experience is and whether it actually relates to the adjacent neighborhood, whether it's 37.5 or 50, becomes a big deal. And I think that's why the neighbors who live in the old neighborhood have been so concerned and have been trying to remind the commission that there's a reason there's a height limit on that block. Oliver Loffs to the north of 65th on that frontage is probably no more than 40 feet and the density there is 47 units per acre. Liquid Sugar is a density of 41 units per acre and Ocean and the neighborhood to the south is 10 to 15 units per acre. And I understand staff's position about the variance and separating that from density, but obviously you need the variance with this design to get the density that's being proposed there. If you reduce the density, if you cut that project off at 30 feet, you would have a, a much reduced density in that development. So I think there's an interrelationship that staff isn't acknowledging. I think there's some grounds for a variance, but those include the effort the applicants may, may, attempting to make to put, put the parking partially below grade and to transition the height of the building, mass from east to west and a little bit from south to north. In my mind, they haven't gone far enough in, in trying to do that if the project's simply going to be tweaked and we end up with something that's very similar to what we see today. I, I, in the letter, I detail ways that the project could be tweaked. There are units in the very south eastern corner. I point out one of those units is presumably a two-bedroom. There's a 15% component for two bedrooms. This is three bedrooms in a project of this density. The reality is you've got to go upstairs to take a bath. If you're going to be living in that particular unit, the bathroom downstairs is a half-bath and you've got to go into the bedroom upstairs to use the bathroom, basically, if you want to take a shower in that two-bedroom unit. In my mind, that pushes the envelope about what is functional space in this development. And I think by combining those two units there, you get a more functional space there. The other concern I have and, and suggestion I have with regard to tweaking is the unit above those adjacent to Baker Metal, it's unit 220. It has two-story clear space. And I guess my, my overwhelming concern with the approval of this project is how it does relate to Baker Metal. And I revised, I did an adjustment to the assessment, that the comparative assessment that the applicant did for Baker Metal. Their assessment for reuse of Baker Metal includes use of the monitors that run the length of those buildings there. They're about 10 feet wide and you have a shed roof there that you can't get up to. Those are non-functional spaces. So when you take out that 4,000 square feet of the supposed fourth floor square footage in the reuse of Baker Metal, it actually brings the reuse to below the other option, which is demolition of Baker Metal and complete redevelopment of that property with a different product. And I guess the, the concern I have beyond the hope to reuse Baker Metal and how getting four and a half stories on the Enclave property may contribute to the demise of the Baker Metal and the idea of reusing those monitors in that wonderful space up there is the fact that we're going to end up with a blank wall. If Baker Metal comes down, we'll have a 45-foot-high wall that extends 88% of the length of that lot from north to south. And for a transitional density and a transitional height, if it were closer to 50%, that length from 65th to Peabody, if it were, if it were closer to 50%, I could understand that there's been a compromise there. But the fact that the fourth level of this proposed project actually extends 88% of the depth of that lot, in my mind, isn't a compromise. And my suggestion in the letter is that one unit on the, on the very south end of the second, the third and fourth floors be eliminated and, you know, where, where it's below the height limit, it could be incorporated into the unit next door. But I had suggested in talking to Charlie and Diana earlier today that we need some language in there that allows for treatment of that west wall of this building. I think actually Chris requested that an elevation be prepared of the west elevation when we had that February hearing so people would really understand what this is going to be if Baker Metal comes down. And, you know, you've got a 30-foot potential access point into the Baker Metal site from 65th Street. And so there are going to be real limitations if that site is demoed and reused for what can be done right there. And so I've got a concern with that 40-foot, 45-foot-high building space there and how that can be treated, given that you've got a building next to it. I think that's it.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else wish to speak on this item?
Jim, would you, does it make sense to move that pad over to there, there so people can sign in after they speak?
Hello, everyone. So I, I'm a homeowner-
Please, please state your name.
Sorry, Peter Repetti. And I am a homeowner and on the board of directors of the Homeowners Association at Oliver Loffs. I have just a short prepared statement I wanted to read and also make reference to the, the letter that Adam mentioned that was written in support of this project by homeowners. I just want to point out that that letter was written a year or so ago. And I think one of the reasons that I felt compelled to come out and, and speak was just to set the record straight on some, some issues that are clearly related to this project, but also related to our situation at Oliver Loffs. Because Adam had called several of the homeowners in the building asking for support on this, on this project and I, and I think at this point, there isn't really anyone in the building who would support this, this project directly. And, and it may be not for the right reasons, but I just wanted to explain what our position is currently. So, let's see. So our, our two, our building is fairly new. It's about two years old that people have been living in it. And the short story is that we have very severe water intrusion problems in our building. These problems were first identified and brought to the attention of the developer more than a year ago and to the, to this day, they remain unremedied. And so by water intrusion, I'm just referring to things like window frames that take on excessive amounts of water that subsequently leaks into people's homes, faulty fireplace flues that allow water ingress, as well as many other leaks of unknown origin that result in water invading both common areas in the building as well as people's homes. And we have at least two examples of rather severe water intrusion damage into people's homes, which obviously compromises the ability of one to live normally in their home. In addition to these serious problems affecting people, they also affect the building and our collective investment in the property. And that's obviously a concern to myself, as well as many of the other homeowners from the building who have joined me here in the audience. So since the developer's been unable to satisfactorily address these issues, since given many opportunities since the rainy season of 2003, we have retained legal counsel and are vigorously pursuing our rights under the law. So my reason specifically for speaking here today is not to make a plea to the city to help us because actually I, I don't think there's much the city can do for us directly and we're actually confident that we're making progress through the normal legal channels of getting a watertight building that we paid for and that we feel we all deserve. My reason for speaking here is to make the city aware of these problems and, and which maybe weren't clear to everyone, especially since the developer was asking us to speak in favor of a related project, and highlight the need for the city, if possible, to take a more active role in ensuring that the new housing that's appearing, as was mentioned, I think by Mr. Bryant before, very rapidly all over the city, is being built to high-quality standards. Our attorneys have led us to believe, the experts for our, our attorneys have led us to believe that many or all the problems that we face at Oliver Loffs were avoidable and have resulted from the developers and their contractors from taking shortcuts in the construction of our building. So the water intrusion problems I've mentioned, to be fair, are not specific to our building at Oliver Loffs. If you look at our neighbors, Liquid Sugar built by Pulte Homes, you can see pretty much that they're constantly repairing, ripping off facade and replacing flashing and, and things of that nature to make that building watertight. And that's been going on for quite a long time. You see it finished and then torn up and repaired again. So that in general brings some concern to me about the quality of building that's being done in Emeryville. So hopefully those residents will have their problems taken care of by their developer and they won't have to resort to the lengthy, we're estimating, long potential battle here and costly route that we're being forced to take. So, so the concerns I've raised directly impact the, the building that's being proposed because the developers have failed, in our case, to provide us with a watertight building and there really isn't any guarantee that the same wouldn't happen at this, at this new building. And so while many of us are, actually I think in favor of the prospect of having that lot turned into residential housing rather than being an empty lot, and I think that's, if you read the letter that was written by the Homeowners Association last year, that's, that's more of what we're endorsing than a specific project. We're endorsing the development of that lot. The, the specific plan, I would leave to the expertise of the commissioners and the neighbors who are directly impacted by the plan, but I would just want to implore the city to take any action that they can to ensure that quality construction is, is, is done. And by quality, I just basically mean construction that protects residents from the elements. So that's all I really wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Hi, my name's Ken Latham. I'm a homeowner at 1254 Ocean Avenue, which borders directly south of the project. You'll also find my name on a letter of support. However, I strongly oppose a height variant, the granting of a height variance and the density of the project. Talking to what the previous speaker said about protecting the neighbors from the, I mean, the residents from the elements, I mean, there's a reason why there's a street called Ocean Avenue between 64th and 65th. The water table is really high and it's a huge problem. And I understand the current design suggests underground parking, which, you know, could be a problem. And I just implore the commission to, you know, really kind of go over everything, all, all that stuff with a fine-tooth comb because we're being just, I'm, I'm feeling like I'm being bulldozed lately in Emeryville as far as development goes. That's it.
Thank you.
My name is Nicholas Harland-Deedes. I'm the developer of Enclave. I just want to respond to Peter Repetti's statement about his expectations of having a development that should be waterproof. That was exactly my intention of providing. When I designed the project, my intention was to design a building of interest, a building of quality, a building that I would be proud of and a building that the, the residents would enjoy living there. Oliver Loffs wasn't my first project, wasn't my second project. I have designed many projects of that caliber with that criteria. And Enclave is, is another example of what my intentions are. Unfortunately, after the building's completion, construction issues arose. First tried to address these through the general contractor. When these issues became beyond the scope and capability of the general contractor, insurance, the insurance company was stepped in. And the insurance companies brought in lawyers and a new working protocol came into place. I was directed not to deal, only to deal through, through the lawyers as opposed to directly with people that were involved. The whole process to solve the construction issues became hijacked, exacerbated, prolonged, causing everyone a lot of pain, a lot of frustration and a lot of anger. And we, we just saw an expression of that anger today, which I, I totally share. I'm working very diligently to get to the bottom of this, to get, to put it beyond, beyond, to, to resolve it. Unfortunately, to a large extent, having to go through a process that is, I have less control these days because of all the other parties that are involved. And to illustrate the, the point that there are outs, there are lawyers and a lawsuit that is pending. I just brought in some correspondence.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio and I live just behind Peabody Land where the new building is going to build. And when I heard about the proposal back in 1921, I just went to visit the architect. And I was impressed by the engineering output that the building has been designed. To me, it was, it was a real impression that the architect was concerned about the safety of the occupant as far as earthquake and safety of the exit in case of fire and all these things. Then the building was redesigned to fit other concern. And then same thing, I went check again and again, on the engineering point of view, it was, it was outstanding to me. And I didn't see any objection that was raised about the capacity because I always look at the building across the street from me on 1269, where it is called a dissection aid there and this has been overcrowded. And we had objection there, many, many, and we were just steamrolled over it and nobody took care, pay any attention of it. Now here, we have a private citizen who is trying to make his finance feasible as far as the building is concerned and then he has to scale down and scale down and he has, he's just too deep involved in it to get away from it. And it's very frustrating is, is when you are doing anything, any kind of project, if you have to please every, everybody who has concern, who come with an argument that are popular, like a site, see what's going on in my bedroom and in my backyard. I have cars, I have to move them because the neighbor don't like them and I have a solar car because people don't believe in that. And it's, it's, it adds so much frustration for people who are building. For people who never built anything, it's easy to complain, easy to find argument. But for those like myself who have been built, who have been victim of basically people who complain, it's a faceless complaint, it's a lie, not a lie, but I mean, it's, it has value. Just like, I just want to complain, I want to say no. So if they don't agree to what I say no, then I lose my authority, I lose my, my clout. So I want to complain and then it's, it's a frustrating process. The commissioner have to put in mind, put yourself in the shoes of whoever wants to build something and justify the area about Ocean Avenue. Then they, they want to come up with something that is going to please and increase the value of the whole neighborhood. Then you have to face the issue that the person who's doing it is putting so much effort and so much, when you talk about time, we talk about bad money, but I'm talking about the effort and that you have to consider that, not as a priority, but as a concern for people who in the future wants to build, they just don't walk- walk away from it. And I'm for all the building of the project like it is here, and I regret that it has been scaled down so much so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lee Steinmetz. I live on-
Could you raise the microphone?
Would you raise the microphone so we can hear-
My name's Lee Steinmetz. I live at 1250 Ocean Avenue, which is on the corner of Ocean and Vallejo. Peabody Alley's in my backyard. I see that the developer has gone to great lengths to address a number of issues with this project. However, it seems to me when the property was purchased, there was a height limit of 30 feet on that block, and I don't see that he's done anything to address that issue. 30 feet is 30 feet. There is a height restriction there for a reason. And if the Baker Metal Building should come down, then it should also not be built above 30 feet. We're transitioning into single, mostly single-family dwellings there, and that's the reason that the height limit was put in place. 30 feet is 30 feet. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Jane Goodwin, 64th Street. Just agree with what Lee said. That's exactly what, how I feel and have been involved in the plans along the way, that the transition from these small little bungalows, Ocean, other 60s streets, should it, when the designer said that it was not a monolith, actually, right before he said that, I was thinking it looked like a very monolithic when you compare it to what is in the surrounding area. And in defense of Gail Bailey, she has a three-unit, large property that's very beautiful, swimming pool inside. However, she's going to, whatever amount she's going to ask for, she's been a citizen of Emeryville and been very supportive and spokesperson for a lot of issues, and she's has done some good things. She lived right across the street from a lot of the building going on, so she has a right to her opinions. But anyway, just really hope that you do not let anything increase over 30 feet of this building for all the reasons that have been stated and in support of not there being a variance for it. Thanks.
Thank you. How many others wish to speak? Could you raise your hand?
Did you sign in?
Perhaps you could line up so, you know, we can move this on a little bit faster and state your name, and then when you're done with your statement, sign in over on the desk. Thank you.
Or perhaps even some of the people who are in line can sign in ahead.
That's a good idea. Thanks, Ed.
Hi, my name's Ryan Preborn. I'm also a resident of Oliver's Lofts. And I think Peter touched on a lot of issues that I'm also concerned about, but I just wanted the commission to actually see the amount of residents from Oliver Loffs that are not in favor of the development, so if they could raise their hands. So, there's quite a few people here. I don't know if all the owners share this viewpoint, but I'd like the commission to consider a third condition of approval for the granting the permit besides the Phase Two and the storm drain, that they consider that the developer address our building issues before granting a permit. I feel that the developer has the money to build the enclave, that he has the money to address our building concerns. If you guys could please comment that after a public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Joshua Shinoff, and I'm here representing the Liquid Sugar Development. I just wanted to reiterate our support of the enclave development. We did write a detailed letter, which I suppose you've seen more than a year ago. And we feel that Mr. Harland-Beedies has bent over backwards to meet the concerns expressed here. They've reduced their project size to meet the transition requirements. And I find it a little bit comical, I guess, that one of the issues raised in the staff report has an opposition to the height variance, is that they want to preserve a structure that is actually in excess of that height variance. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
My name's Jeremy Schmitz. I'm also a resident of Oliver Loffs. First, I wanted to thank Peter and Ryan for sharing their thoughts and also making it very clear to the commission that the majority, and I think that we have representation here, of the residents of Oliver Loffs are not in support of the project proposed across the street. One of the points that I would like to make, actually, probably the only point that I'd like to make, is that I feel that there's a lot of focus on the design of the building, and you've heard a lot of opinions about the height and the variance. One of the things that attracted us to Oliver Loffs versus some other properties even within Emeryville was the design of the building. There's no question that we have an architect who can design really nice-looking buildings. But what seems to be forgotten in this sort of session, and I'm glad some of the fellow residents of Oliver have brought up the concern, is that it is the imperative of the builder and the developer to not only build something that looks nice when he's selling and marketing the units, but also when the residents live there. And I think that the planning commission has shown great concern for the community and the residents of this community in terms of their safety. But my wife and I bought into this property nearly two years ago. We've since had a baby, and I tell you, I'm up nights thinking about the possibility of mold. Thank God, we do not have the severe water intrusion issues that some of our neighbors do, including the one who has been forced to live in a hotel because he has been unable to occupy his own residence. But having a five-month-old, I have severe concern for the possibility of mold that's growing within our walls, and frankly, we don't know. We have no idea if that type of situation exists. So, I would just encourage the commission to, you know, as the fellow residents have pointed out, to become deeply involved, not only in sightline and variance issues, but also the building quality. I think everybody here wants a community that's built on solid foundation. And solid foundation comes from buildings that aren't decrepit and falling down after only two years of existence. That's my point.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Cumberley. I live at 1250 Ocean Avenue. And I wanted to say that we, after the February Planning Commission meeting, there was another neighborhood meeting in May where Mr. Harland-Beedies came with his entourage and talked about the plan again, and we expressed our, you know, concerns. And basically, he's made no changes since then. So, nothing, you know, the, all the things that we had talked about and were concerned about, I, like, why are we going through this process, you know? So, I, the way I see the transition between the higher-density building of Liquid Sugar and Oliver and the single-family dwellings on Ocean Avenue really needs to have a more integrated transition. And sort of like the infill developments in West Berkeley would be kind of what I was thinking, you know, a little bit more closer to where there's an industry right next to a house, and then there's some things that seem to fit with the project. Baker Metal Building is one of the last industrial buildings that has any kind of character at all, and it would be kind of a nice thing to keep that and to have that piece of Emeryville's heritage as kept alive. And it would be too bad if it was torn down, and I think it probably would be if this height variance was allowed. There's no question that the project is well-designed in its, the way it looks. It's just, I think it's too dense and too big. It's, I, I don't see where the special hardship is, why he needs to have this variance. So, the last thing is my next-door neighbor wasn't able to make it. She was over at the site, the enclave site, this last weekend, tricycling around with her and her friends, and she picked up a box. There's a lot of leftover construction debris still, after how many years, left on the site. So, that's like, that's really got to get handled, too. And I'm not sure who this residence is, where they're going to stage it, but hopefully it's big lot.
Where was that debris?
That was in the enclave lot, picked out this weekend. Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jane Schmitz, and I too am a resident at Oliver Loffs. And when one of the other residents came up and said something about, he would hope that you consider having the developer fix our building prior to going to the new building, I saw some giggles and head shaking at the city planner table there, which really frustrates me because although it may seem unrealistic to do so, I think it's unfair for the city to also disregard, I'm not assuming that you are, but I really feel like you should listen to what the citizens already here feel. I feel like a developer, we all came here because we wanted to live in Emeryville. We want, obviously, our property values to go up. What I don't want is a whole group of new citizens coming in here and being completely unhappy where they live. We've been here just under two years, and we're ready to sell and get out because we're frustrated. I just think it's so unfair to disregard everything that's going on at Oliver Loffs and let him build again prior to fixing what is here. All you're going to get is unhappy people all over again. And that should be important to Emeryville. There's not a whole lot of residents in Emeryville, and for the majority of people, 50 units, majority with two people per unit, 100 people unhappy with where we live, it's unnecessary. And I also wanted to state that the lawsuit was something that we, none of us want. It was a last resort. Had phone calls been returned, had we been given the time of day when the problems first occurred two years ago, we never would be where we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jeffries?
Yes.
I'd just like to briefly respond to that. I want everyone to be assured that the city does take this very seriously. And the expressions that you might have seen over here related to the suggestion that fixing of Oliver Loffs be a condition of approval of a project across the street, we can't legally do that. We can't tie the two projects together legally. They're separate projects, they're separate issues, so you can't have conditions of approval on one property that relate to fixing another property. That's what we were talking about up here.
Thanks, Charlie. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Jean Robertson. I live in the area and a lot of friends in the street on Ocean Avenue and walk around in the neighborhood a lot. And I think about the neighborhood and the development a lot, and I've been involved in some of the other development questions in the Greenway. The main thing I want to say is that I think that it's important to keep that height variance at 30 feet and not go up because it is a, we don't really see any pictures, we didn't really see any pictures tonight of what the south side of that neighborhood looks like. But besides being single-family homes, they're mostly little cottages, except for a couple of slightly bigger buildings. And it's kind of, I don't, I, the Baker Metal Building has got some character to it. The developers of the enclave reduced the height so that you could see the outline of the Baker Metal Building in theory from, you know, the east side. But really, you, all you would see was just a little tiny bit of it. You kind of lose the whole character of that building. So, I just think, why would you give a variance? I don't, I don't get why, why there needs, why there would need to be a variance, like 30 feet? You know, why let him, why let another development be really big when we're trying to step down into the residential neighborhood? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Motick, I also live on 64th Street. I can see the Baker Metal Building from my back porch. I don't think that they need to have a variance of, this is 50% higher than what is allowed, the part that they want to go to 45 feet. Seeing, you know, how small some of the houses are to the south, there's a darn good reason that it's a 30-foot height limit. It's 30-foot height where I live, and they certainly wouldn't let me build 45 feet high. That being said, the design's a heck of a lot better than it was when they started coming to us in 2000, 2001 with rather large apartment block-looking place. And I do know that they can design a good building, and perhaps with a little bit more consideration and coming back with another design, they could get a really great place built there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Please, you sure you sign in?
Good evening, commission. My name is Frank Ting, and I'm a resident at the Oliver Loffs. I just wanted to add, aside from the water intrusion issue, there are other issues that are not covered or that will not be handled by our legal counsel. They involve things like very, very, very poorly stained floors, that laminating that's peeling off, walls that are very thin that you can actually hear noise, music noise, very, very thin walls that were, well, conveyed to us as party walls that were well-insulated, that would actually keep noise out. I feel that in some ways, you know, we have been sold something that really was, was not the way that it was told to us. Now, if, in fact, he had cut some corners in doing the construction, if he hadn't, I would have been more than happy to pay a higher price because I think it is true that the building is very aesthetically appealing, and it is unfortunate that at this point there are so many problems with it. I know that it is really not the commission's responsibility to make the corrections or to make that decision based on, you know, what we're experiencing. But I do want to stress that I liked Emeryville when I moved in about a year ago. At this point, you know, I just feel very ambivalent about living here because I paid for, I'm a new homeowner, and I paid good money for, you know, my home, and the experience has really left me with a very bad impression about owning homes, about this particular developer. But at this point, I am stuck with having to make repairs or bear the cost of making any repairs to, you know, any of the problems because they are not just related to water intrusion, and then that's really unfortunate. So, I just wanted to let you know that there's, there are other problems that go beyond just a water intrusion issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol and Charlie, I'd like a little guidance here on this. Well, I appreciate the Oliver Loffs folks' concerns about some of the problems that they're having with their building, and that's something that perhaps through another medium we could address, but I'm just wondering, is that relevant to what we're, is before us now, and how should we proceed with that in terms of people that want to speak?
I think certainly in terms of if there's people here that want to continue discussing Oliver Loffs, you should let them.
Okay.
But in terms of your role in terms of the planning commission, we really need to look at the resolution and the findings that need to be made and the evidence that's been presented as to those findings. And with regards to building, these building construction defects, you know, we have a requirement that things are built to code, and the construction defects are kind of beyond the purview of this planning commission. I would just say not to foreclose the discussion since it's already gone on. I think we should allow people to finish.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Zoe Bloom, and I live on Ocean Avenue. I live in a small, small, small cottage built in 1906 by Italian farm workers. I'd really appreciate the commission's respecting the height variance and respecting the character of the neighborhood. I was in the car with my 89-year-old aunt, and we were driving down 65th and Hollis, and it said luxury condos, and she said, "Nobody can live there." And her reasoning was that the building was boxy, it was jammed up right against the street, and it was very high and not conducive to a city-like rural atmosphere, you know, agreeable to somebody from out of town. So, I'd really like to encourage you to keep up the ambiance for the neighborhood, keep it small. it small, keep the low density, and it would make a much nicer experience for all of the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. Can you?
I have made, I just want to add something.
Uh-huh.
And I want to insist about the complaint nature, which is fine, you know, I like to hear that, but I want the planning commissioner to know that the last three years I had to take down things that I made just to please the bitches next door. And one of it was a telescope, it was a telescope, the other one was a solar cell, and the third one was a propeller to get.
Is this related to the, is this related to the current?
Exactly, it's related to that.
All right, you're on your second, please keep this very short.
Yes, well, and what I'm saying is that there is a lot of trouble for people who make things that are surrounded by those who don't complain. Thank you.
Thank you. It was no more comments. The public hearing is closed, and we'll bring it back to the commission for deliberation.
Yeah, if I may?
Yes, Joe, please.
I've got a couple of comments. I do have a number of issues with this project, but I want to address the residents here. One of the things that we do in a commission is sometimes we have a hard choice. We have to look at the overall city in terms of how we're growing the city and what we can put in there. I'm very distressed, I must, I must say, that we do have some citizens who are unhappy and who feel bulldozed. This is certainly not what we want to do here. And I can, as Charlie indicated, we take all of these seriously. And if you've watched us in the past, you've seen us talk to the developers about quality building, making sure that they understand that we have winds and that we are a relatively damp area. And this is going to present problems to a lot of developers, even good ones, right? So we do look at that particular issue quite carefully, and we do talk to the developers. And as Charlie indicated, we have code enforcement types of things. The other thing that I bring, and Charlie's again right, that legally, we can't, we can't look at, you know, one project versus another. One of the things that I'm always concerned about, and I get slammed a few times by my fellow commissioners, is track record. And if a developer has a track record that is good, then we are much happier to see him do more developments. But developer that has track record that isn't so good, that raises a red flag. And although I can't use that as, as any kind of determining factor in some areas, it would be one that I would definitely question in far more depth than any developer. This developer, my concern is that we still have garbage on a parking lot many, many years afterwards, and we've had many discussions about that particular issue. So I have a red flag about this from even that aspect. But as far as, as far as I'm concerned, almost everything is moot right now because we haven't got a Phase II soil study. So I, you know, to me, you know, we can't do anything until that's done. Anyway, that's my discussion.
Thanks, Joe.
I've watched this project from the original 29-unit proposal that was first presented in Mr. Martin's living room some number of years ago. And so I go down to 26, and now down to 20. And I will have to say that the design has significantly improved. That's, you know, that's all to the good. There's still a lot of issues. I would, since, you know, those first meetings when it was 29, I've consistently heard from the neighborhood the importance of the Baker Metals building and how the neighbors view that as an asset. And I certainly see, when I see the drawings that show that the west edge of this property is only, what, perhaps four feet or so below the height of the Baker Metals, it certainly is going to block it, and it certainly will put significant pressure on for remodeling. I could perhaps see a slight variance, I cannot see a variance, to this height by any means. As someone pointed out, it's like nearly a 50% increase over the allowable height limit. I could see perhaps a marginal one, in part perhaps justified by, you know, the effort to put the parking partial, at least partially underground. But, you know, this, I think, goes well beyond what is called for, given the fact that it is a 30, 30-foot height limit. But even beyond that, you know, I certainly agree with what Joe had to say and the question that Chris had about the Phase II. And certainly, when Patty asked before, you know, that was a very relevant question. What could the Phase II, depending on what it said, perhaps impact the design? I cannot approve a design, make a design review without knowing what the impact would be on this, so I cannot move forward at this point.
Thank you, Ed. Mary?
Yes, I am very influenced by the height. It seems to me that the overwhelming opinion of the mandate neighborhood is that the 30-foot limitation should, I, I am influenced by that.
Thank you, Mary. Jennifer?
I have a couple of comments. I'll keep them short. In the light that we're trying to find ways to change our general industrial districts to light industrial districts so we can allow more housing to occur in the city of Emeryville, it doesn't appear as though we have any shortage of interest in building housing in Emeryville. In that light, a 30-foot height limit, I believe, was set for a very specific reason. Emeryville sits at the base of the Bay Bridge. We're under significant development pressure, and therefore, the 30-foot height limit is in place, in my view, to protect the character of the city of Emeryville overall in the long term in the face of this significant development pressure. I absolutely see no reason whatsoever to give a variance on the 30-foot height limit that's in place in this particular neighborhood. If the property was one block to the north, this would not be an issue. It's in the block that it's in. The 30-foot height limit variance was actually, the 30-foot height limit was in place, I believe, when the property was purchased. If I was a 500-pound person and I lost 300 pounds, or 200 pounds, and I was a 300-pound person, I would, yes, indeed, be healthier, but I would not make me healthy. So I feel really strongly about this. The other issue that I have particularly regarding housing in this part of town is that we're talking about, again, more people moving to Emeryville, and I would, I would very much like to see, would this project go forward, at least a few three-bedroom houses. This is a mantra that Mr. Troyding, Commissioner Troyding usually takes up. But a 20-unit, a 20-unit development with mostly single-bedroom units, I don't think is acceptable, given where Emeryville is going.
Thank you so much for that.
Thanks, Jennifer. Chris?
Yeah, oh, Jennifer, you said so many of the things I wanted to say, and so much more eloquent than I could. So let me just say that, and I said this back in February, and I haven't really changed my opinion on that, we're looking at a block that has a Greenway, the Baker Metal Building, which we all decide we would like to see preserved, this little tiny stupid insignificant lot, and then a parking lot. And how can we possibly consider to take the property in the middle before we make any decisions on the rest of that block? I don't see, also don't see where we have any less people here complaining this time than we did the last time. And I just really think that, never mind it's not supposed to affect us, and never mind the opinions of the people in Oliver Loft isn't going to affect us, I don't want to sit here a year from now and get another set of people coming in here complaining about construction. And I just agree with everybody else here that this is, this land use for this particular building at this site and that density is just inappropriate.
Thanks, Chris. Well, thank you all for coming out tonight. I know you have a lot of other things you'd probably rather be doing. I share the concerns of the commission on this one. One thing that I did want to point out, and thank you to the lady that brought in the debris from the site, I was out at the site today, and I was very disappointed to see significantly more debris that looks like it's been there for quite a while at the edge, I'm assuming it's at the edge of the property on Peabody, and it included old sofas. It was just a bunch of junk, and it's just, it's not acceptable, and it's not being a good neighbor to allow that to remain on your property, regardless of who put it there. You have an obligation to keep that site cleaned or fence it off so people don't have access to it. So I really hope that, as a good neighbor, you would take care of cleaning that site up. That's my first comment. I'm very concerned about the Phase II site assessment. I don't think we can proceed until we have a sense of what's on the site, because I strongly believe it will impact the design if the site's contaminated. And I think that it's something that should be of great interest to you so that you can get a sense of how much it might cost if the site is contaminated. And I believe that we should hold off on making any decisions until we have a better sense of what's out on that site. And then, thirdly, I have some concerns about the capacity of the sewer line out there. Now, I know this is something that's been just brought to everyone's attention, including the applicants recently, but it's something that we need to address. I don't know if the condition that's been put before us is adequate to do that. Perhaps as part of the time that would be needed to do a Phase II study, there could be a commitment to move forward in an expeditious fashion to get a sense of what type of capacity issues we're dealing with, with that sewer line. Is it really a problem, or is there capacity to allow at least this project to move forward? But we really need to address that issue, because there will be more development in that area, and will be brought back to us again and again and again if we don't deal with it now. Thank you. Do I have any motions?
Basically, we obviously don't have a motion to approve, so we have either a motion to deny, but we didn't get a resolution to do that, right?
You can direct us to prepare findings for denial, if that's your pleasure. We would bring them back to you at your next meeting.
So moving.
Second.
You're denying it, you're denying the height variance, is that correct?
I would favor denying the entire.
By a project.
The entire project. And is it not possible to vote that tonight?
Well, you don't have written findings before you, so you really need to have written findings.
Written findings, okay.
And we can prepare those and bring them to you at your next meeting.
Okay.
Which would be December 7th, 8th?
9th, I believe.
So at this point, we're continuing? Is there a motion to continue?
No.
No, 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 I don't want to continue this.
Voting to deny, and we would bring it back to you for the formal resolution at your next meeting. December 9th.
Okay.
Understand that the applicant always has the right to appeal this to the city council.
Yes, after you make the formal vote on December 9th. This is not, this would not be a formal denial tonight. This is just like a straw vote, a direction to us.
Yeah, to prepare the findings. Do you need a roll call, or?
Yes, I believe you do. On the motion to direct staff to prepare findings for denial of the project, Commissioner Brook?
Aye.
Commissioner Kane?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
Commissioner Troyding?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jeffrey?
Aye.
Six ayes. We will bring you findings for denial on December 9th.
Charlie, if I may, if I recall correctly, we've had a couple of comments about the lots and the trash in that area, I think, in a couple of meetings a while back, and it's been ongoing. Is there, is there something that we can do as a city to sort of enhance our ability to clean that up?
Well, yes, we have a community preservation officer, and that's her bailiwick, and we have a community preservation task force with council members, Kathy and Davis, and staff members on it, and we can refer this problem to them to address.
Okay.
Can you specifically tell me which lots you're talking about? Or maybe you can tell me later, after the meeting, so, thank you.
Okay, we're going to have a five-minute break.